Okay. We all set, James?
You are all set.
Okay, thank you very much, James, and thank the staff, IT staff and everybody. June 10th, we're going to call this meeting, Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, to order, and if everybody could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, if, Craig, if you could do the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Claffey?
Here.
Commissioner Fox?
Here.
Commissioner Havens?
Here.
Commissioner Sobieski?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
Commissioner Braverman? Commissioner Haggerty?
Here.
Commissioner Lenares?
Here.
Commissioner Gill? Chairman Payne?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everybody. The, we have approval of the agenda. I don't think there's any changes. Is that correct?
Just one, just one reorganizational thing, Mr. Chairman. When I did the agenda, I clicked and dragged the approval of minutes under new business, rather than making it its own item. So please amend the agenda to make approval of minutes, item Roman numeral eight.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Craig.
Mr. Chairman, I will indicate that the presentation is actually correctly numbered for you based upon this change.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go right into public participation. If there's anybody online that would like to speak about anything, you'll...
Did we, did you want to have a vote on the approval of agenda first?
Um, we just did. If, without objection, if there's no objection, we're gonna change the agenda, approve the agenda. Does anybody have any objection?
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So the approval of the agenda is moved without objection, and now we'll go into public participation for anybody on the line that would like to speak to the Town Planning and zoning. And I think we have two people that want to speak. Both commissioners right now? Do we have any?
I just had a quick question or concern. If everyone is not talking, can mute, so we limit the background noise. I can hear conversations like a radio or something, just to be kind to everybody. If you're not talking, mute or, or turn off the background noise. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Great, great. Great concern. I appreciate that. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none, we'll go into our zoning enforcement officer report. Andrew's online. We haven't been, we have a very light one because Andrew's been taking care of everything informally, but he has a couple on here. Andrew, are you there?
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, so, yeah, it is a light report this month. I'm still talking to people to try and resolve situations. And are there any questions on the May 2020 report?
I, I don't have any questions. Any questions from commissioners?
Commissioner Claffey, I just have a question. If, I know we're not going out and doing, due to COVID, some certain things, but is there any updates maybe you could bring for the next meeting of things that you were working on during this time that have got resolved, you know, administratively, or something that would say back from, you are following from, say, November 2019, that through your administratively been resolved, and we can take off future lists, just so we kind of see, you know, that things have been getting completed. I know you're working and all that, but just to, you know, because some people might look and be like, well, there's only two things here, but I and most commissioners understand it all. But I know there were some things, Andrew, from way back that you might be working on in the future. You could just bring and say, hey, here's an update on 123 Main Street, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. Thanks, Anthony. I can do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, that would be helpful, Andrew, if you give us a report of the things that you've been working on, on with the informally.
Sure, no problem.
Is there anything else? Do you have anything else, Andrew?
Nothing else from me, no.
And, and you're gonna be working with Craig on a couple of things for, that we're gonna look into changing, which is...
Correct, yeah. There was a commercial vehicle regulation, and I believe a personal business regulation that the commission wanted to explore, maybe modify or, or not, maybe when we get back in person. So, yeah, we are working on that as well.
Okay, very good. All right, there's nothing else? Yep, there's nothing else. Is there any remarks from commissioners? If there isn't any, we'll go to...
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, Stanley Sobieski. I look, finally see all the comments about the, engineers' comments about the, the the business at Hartford Avenue in Maine. There was some, some questions I had about them. I'll wait till we get, I don't know if we can bring it up or not, because we had closed this under... We can, we can talk about it when we talk about the application. All right, fine. Okay, Anthony?
The one item I have in regards to the May 13th minutes, they're still incorrect in my packet.
Okay, can we, let's, let's talk about that when we talk about the minutes under section eight.
We'll do.
Okay, so the, if there's no other remarks?
One, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Steve?
This is really more to the planner. My packet again arrived in today's mail, so I don't know what's going on, but it's coming later and later.
Did anyone else, or did everyone else receive their packet in a timely manner?
I think I received mine, Craig.
All right, I'll, I'll talk to the postmaster, Commissioner Woods, about why yours is...
I got mine on Monday, but today I got the, the P O C D in the mail.
Yes, that's what I got, too.
I, I did get the P O C D in the mail today, but I didn't, and I also got the packet in the mail today.
We, we gotta try to mail those out a few, few extra days earlier. There's not that much on the agenda. We should be able to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
Tom Gill, Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gill.
Yeah, I just, I, I think I was muted during the attendance.
Okay.
I got my, I got one package yesterday, and I got another package today.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, we're gonna go to public hearings, and I'll have Greg, Craig, if you could read the procedures for the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, my Wi-Fi is acting up. Every once in a while, everybody freezes, and I can't hear what's being said. So if I'm talking over somebody right now, I apologize. I will read the, the procedures for public hearings. The order of proceedings at public hearings shall be as follows. A, convening by chairman. B, reading of the notice by the commission secretary or commissioner designated by the chairman to act in his stead. C, identification and location of the property involved by the town planner. D, the statement of the issue to be considered by the chairman or the town planner. E, presentation by the applicant, limited to 20 minutes unless a specific extension is granted by the chair. F, persons wishing to speak in favor of the application, limited to two minutes per person. G, persons wishing to speak in opposition to the application, limited to three minutes per person. H, rebuttal by the applicant, limited to five minutes total. I, rebuttal by the opposition, limited to five minutes total. During a public hearing, it shall be within the discretion of the chairman, whether the time limits should be varied slightly, provided the commission consents to any such variance. In no case shall an extension be for more than 20% of the allotment indicated above, or one minute, whichever is greater.
Thank you very much. The first petition is petition 10-20 zoning text amendment, section 3.11, 3.16, 3.17, and 9.2 regarding breweries and brew pubs. Newington TPZ applicant continued from May 27, 2020. Do you want to give us a little update, Craig?
Right. We continued this from last, from the last meeting for a couple of reasons. One was the commission wanted me to add the provision for a distillery, so I did that. And I think the other reason the commission wanted to hold on to it for, for a while is because there was a discussion about, about allowing food trucks in association with, with brew pubs. And in my memo, I suggest that the issue of food trucks is really more complicated than that, so I'm, I'm suggesting that I develop a separate regulation for food trucks for the commission to take up at its, at its convenience, but not, but not included in the brew pub regulation. That's my suggestion.
Mr. Payne? Dominic, you're muted.
I'm sorry, everybody. Commissioner Claffey, you have the floor.
The, the few questions, just two questions I have on this, Mr. Planner. With the addition of distillery, when I look at your packet, let me see, your second page of your memorandum, which is actually your first page of the proposed. What is the reasoning for leaving distillery out of the B business zones and the I special permits in the I industrial zones? Will we not want distilleries and breweries allowed in both zones?
Okay, so, yes, as you can see, I, I put it in the list of permitted uses in the industrial zone, but I didn't include it in either of the business zones, because distillery, it's, it's an industrial use, and I don't think of distilleries as the kind of activity where there is a, a restaurant or a taproom associated with, as opposed to where they are normally. In fact, that's why we're making this amendment, so that we can have the, the types of brew pubs that people are seeing around the state. So that's why I did not include it in my, my list of permitted uses in the industrials, I mean, other than in the industrial zone.
I want to get the comments from the other commissioners. I'm just, there's a small distillery-style business in another state about the size of our Carvels in downtown, and some of these distilleries are small. They're called small batch distilleries, which might be a 200-gallon tank sitting in a small establishment. So I don't know what everyone's take is, but some of these distilleries in other towns, communities are, are just as small or as big as a brew brewery, like the ones, you know, Five Churches in New Britain, or Alvarium in New Britain. So what's the consensus of including every, you know, the distillery, the brewery, the brew pub, everything in all zones? I mean, I'd like some, some commissioner feedback on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Claffey. Yeah, I tend to agree with you that maybe it would be nice to leave the flexibility where we could get a small little distillery in the business zone. If it, if it's too big, then they won't apply for that zone. They'll come somewhere else, so...
They'd have to get a special permit regardless. I mean, I'm just saying, do we add it, you know, Mr. Planner, like, under 3.11.9, put distillery, and then in 3.18, make a number .9, and add distilleries? I mean, is that feasible or not?
I have no objection to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my second question on distillery on the third, second page?
Let's see, Anthony, if you could hold off a little, let's see if every, let's see if everybody's in favor of what you're talking about. I'll go to Commissioner Lenares and then Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it was good work what the planner did in terms of being innovative to break down everything and give us some explanation on the different types. I also think it was extremely innovative of Commissioner Claffey last week to ask to have these distilleries included. I would say we're way behind the eight ball in terms of the brewery, brew pub regulations, and I think we're getting there, and I think we'll be ahead of the curve with the distilleries. So I would be in favor of having them in all of the zones permitted, and as Commissioner Claffey said earlier, either way, they'd have to come to the commission for special exception.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenares. Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
I would have no objection either. I think Commissioner Claffey did a good job, but I would be wondering, maybe it's just because you, you used the, the, you know, small batch distillery. Does anybody think you would want to put a limit on the size of the distillery in a, in a business zone?
I wouldn't be in favor of that, because we don't know enough about their business, and why would we want to stifle their business? You know, who knows if they can make 200 gallons, 500 gallons, you know? If the, they're gonna pick a place that is, is going to be, that they can grow into, so... But I'm open to see whatever, anybody else thinks about it.
Point, point taken, Mr. Commissioner, and I, I was just thinking on a grand scale, but I agree.
No problem. Commissioner Claffey?
And then the second part of this is on the second page, where it's, the distillery definition is there, Mr. Minor. It doesn't say, on the brew pub and the brew pub restaurant, it discusses onsite consumption, and I know tastings, yes, is onsite consumptions, but in the distillery definition, it doesn't talk specifically to onsite consumption like it does in like the brew pub restaurant, the last sentence, open containers to be consumed on the premises in conjunction. I, I mean, I would, I don't want to hear it, like Litchfield Distillery, they do tastings.
With my draft, I, I did include tasting, as you noticed. Stopped short of, of allowing it, the consumption of it, pretty like we do with a brew pub, but I had no opposition to adding some sort of language to allow some kind of, I don't know what the word would be, but a place for people to buy and consume on the premises, in a casual dining sort of atmosphere in, in, in a distillery.
Yeah, I, I just wouldn't want it to tie their hands. You know, I wanted to kind of mirror how we broke down brew pub, brew pub restaurant, where brew pub and brew pub restaurant, yes, we know they're different, and there's different things going on, but they both can have open containers to consume onsite. I don't think that'd be too hard, and, and I don't think with the commission's approval, I don't think it's something we need to send back for another delay. I think we, we can trust that the definition will be fine. It's up to you guys. I just don't want to keep holding this off and holding it off.
No.
I, I think everything we've done is great, and those are just my, you know, as I said, my two small little concerns. I don't, I don't think it, I personally don't think we could hold something up moving forward, but the, the commission does have the, the final say.
Commissioner Payne? Thank you. Just a minute, Stan, yeah, go ahead, Stanley, and then Commissioner Lenares after that. Okay. Go ahead.
My only concern in the I-zone, because our I-zone's about residential, is I'd like to make sure that we have enough buffering in there. That's all I'm concerned with. I know Commissioner Lenares brought up the one on John Downey, which is all industrial, and it's at least 600 to 1,000 feet away from a residential on either side. That's my only concern. I just want to make sure we don't, you know...
Under our special exception process, I believe that our buffering and all the regulations under 5.2 and would cover the buffering and the other requirements, so that would just cover, that would be all covered as a special exception as somebody comes in.
I would just be concerned people hanging around outside yelling and screaming, that's all. That's my concern.
I agree with you, and we can, we would address each one on an individual basis, depending on the location. Commissioner Lenares?
Yes, both good points by Commissioner Claffey and Commissioner Sobieski. I would just echo the thoughts that these brew pub and brew pub restaurant regulations and descriptions that Craig prepared, I think, should mirror the distillery option as well, with the only difference obviously being the spirit that we're talking about. I think they should go hand in hand, and once again, I just, I can't stress enough that it's gonna be ahead of the curve with this distillery explanation in terms of what we're behind on the brew pub. So I'd be in favor of the two being mirrored against each other, with the only difference obviously being the the type of spirit.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Lenares. Any other commissioners have any comments or concerns?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question, or more of a comment, I guess, than a question. Wouldn't a distillery, if it's served, then become a brew pub? Obviously, they're making their own, but, so could they, would they just apply for both licenses?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the distillery is more of the, the whiskeys and stuff like that, and pub compared to the brew pubs. Am I, am I correct there, Anthony?
I would have to refer back to Commissioner, about Commissioner, the planner Minor. I, I think it all depends. I, I think that's, that's a good question, Commissioner Woods. But going back to his, the planner memorandum, he talks specific about alcoholic liquor versus the spirit wording, so maybe Mr. Minor can explain better than me.
You're seeing a distillery as more of a hard liquor than?
Yeah, I believe so. We'll have Commissioner, I mean, the town planner explain that. Craig, are you there?
Yes. Right. Yes, if you go to the definitions from the state statutes, which are in my memo, section 30.1 definitions, this, this is from the state statutes. For the interpretation of this chapter, unless the context indicates a different meaning, three, alcoholic liquor or alcoholic beverage include the four varieties defined in subdivisions 2, 5, 18, and 19. All right, so 2, 5, 18, and 19. I don't have them in front of me, but one of them is, one of them is beer. One of them is, I'm sorry, something else, but 18 is the one that's spirits. That's someone that's hard liquor. What we think of as hard liquor, whiskey, brandy, rum. So that's, that's why we needed to come up with a definition of distillery to make a distinction between the different kinds of, of alcohol that people can get licenses from the state to make.
What beer is included in it?
Well, beer is, I wish I'd printed the entire section 30.1. Beer is, is either 2, 5, or 19. I don't remember which.
I think it's five. Okay, I mean, again, I don't, I would like not to hold this up either. I'm looking, moving forward. I just don't want the interpretation of this to impede someone from moving forward. So if we need to get it right, before we actually vote on it, I think we should. But again, I think it's a great start, and I'm, I'm full support of moving forward on this.
Mr. Minor?
Okay.
Mr. Minor? Definition number two is alcohol, number five is beer, number 18 is spirits, and number 19 is wine.
Okay. Thank you very much, James. So Craig, so we still have to have the two separate. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, my Wi, my Wi-Fi froze. Commissioner Payne, I didn't, Chairman Payne, I didn't hear what you said.
So we're still required to have, you heard what James gave you, the definitions there of 2, 5, 18, and 19? No.
I can't hear you. I'm gonna try to log on a different way.
Okay. All right. Okay, while he's logging on, commissioners, one of the other things was whether or not we want to give the, these businesses the option of having a food truck at their, at their location, and sometimes they'll change it up. They don't, they don't have to have one, but we don't really have any places for food trucks, and I thought this was a nice place where we could say to these businesses, if you wanted to have a food truck included into your plan of special exception, and, and and we could plan for that. So the other commissioners, how do you feel about having an option for these businesses to have a food truck? Which, there again, it depends on the location, and it still has to go through approval process.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, I seem to remember, we went through this a couple of years ago, when, and I thought we had designated the entire center of Constance Lee, and I can't remember where else it was, where a food truck could park if they took a permit out. If I'm not mistaken, I remember that. And I...
Yeah, I... I think you're, I think you're correct. This is just another thing for food trucks, basically. So I think you're, go ahead.
There's another one.
I can't hear him.
It's worse now.
Gotta make sure you leave one or the other muted when you start to talk, Craig.
All right, let me try this. Okay, that's good. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear.
Okay, good. I'm, I'm here twice, yes. There's another level, though, of permit that a food truck operator needs to get, and that is a permit from the police department, because they have a list of roads in Newington where food trucks are allowed by the police. So it's, it's one thing for the zoning commission to identify areas of town where the zoning commission has no problem with food trucks, but there's also the police list of, of approved streets.
Dominic, you're, you're muted again.
Sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Woods. So this is just another avenue for food trucks that if a small brew pub opens up, and it's easier for them to have a food truck in there to have the food, then they alternate food trucks. Someday, they might have a lobster, someday they have a different type of food trucks. What's, what's the harm on, on giving them the option of having that, provided that it complies with the rest of our special exception? Any?
Commissioner Payne?
Yep. Yes, Garrett?
Question, um, they said that food trucks, the police have a list of streets where food trucks can be. We have, the TPZ has areas where they can be, and then you're gonna have brew pubs that are in different spots. Is there any way to de-conflict the, you know, if the police list is different from what the TPZ has, and if the brew pub is in an area where the police say it can't be? Is that an issue?
Well, well, it's actually kind of, it's sort of apples and oranges. Let me take a step back. Planning, the zoning commission regulates the use of private property. We don't really regulate what takes place within the street, between the, the curves of a street. That's what the police regulate. So it isn't that the Planning and Zoning Commission allows or forbids food trucks on the road, because you really don't have jurisdiction over that. That's the police department's realm, or the town manager, or the highway superintendent. But on private property, your policy is in the past been not to allow food trucks until now. Now we're talking about allowing food trucks in association with a brew pub.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Any, any other commissioners?
Mr. Woods?
Brian Haggerty, Commissioner Haggerty, do you have something?
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, I, I think our language, you know, should be as inclusive as possible, and, you know, use the permitting process to, you know, make the, the exceptions or exemptions, and then I guess that would be my two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Claffey? Did you have anything? Commissioner Fox?
Actually, my, most of my questions were answered by everybody before me, but I do like the idea of the food trucks, but I, so, it's like you say, if, let's say, you know, Saturday is lobster day, or and, you know, and, you know, Thursday is grinder day or something, the, the owner of the brew, the brew pub would you know, contract with the owner of the food pubs, say, you know, come on down, or have some kind of agreement?
Correct, Commissioner. Correct. Correct, Commissioner. Correct. Alright, we have, we have somebody from the, uh, public that would like to speak, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. Portion of this and, uh, if you'd like to speak, you, you, uh, can unmute. Santoro?
Or am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
You can hear me. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Cara from. Santoro from Francis Avenue. I speak at a lot. The meetings, uh, what bothers me is that this whole thing is sounds like it's already decided. It's great. It's innovative. We've never had a big public meeting because of the COVID. I think this really should be pushed off for the public to. Participate because you know, most people don't sign into a webinar. I'm used to it from what I do for work. But most people don't, most people don't even know this is going on. And I, I would like the answer as to why this is the only area in Newington that's being considered for this.
No, 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 no. You're, you're mistaken. We're not considering any special area. This is throughout anywhere in town. This is for any business. Uh, PD zone, Berlin Turnpike zone.
Well, this, this had said Newington Junction.
No, I don't think it talks about Newington Junction at all. We're talking about regarding breweries and brew pubs. And, and there's nothing to mention New England Junction. We're talking about. It's being allowed in, um, uh, every zone except for residential zone. Uh, it's, uh, it's an incentive for small businesses to start. Uh, in town, providing that they can comply with a special exception and, uh, and other, uh, rules of this commission.
Right. And we know that this has been brought up before for Newington Junction. I'm not sure, you know, small businesses, so let's bring more bars and people drinking. If you spend some time on Francis Avenue up at the top near Willard. You'll see what goes on here already. And the last thing we need to do is put something over here. And have another Yahoo area going on on top of what already goes on here. There's so much traffic now. People cut up and down the streets. There's noise at night. And I know this is being considered for Newington Junction because it's been on the agenda before when I've spoken. It's, it might be.
Ma'am, I, I, I'm going to have the town planner to correct us right now. Craig, could you?
It's, it's the I zones. So maybe I can correct you there. You're looking for it in the I zone. Which one of them is over here at Newington Junction? And I just think before this is just a, you know, broad, okay, we're approving this for all the I zones. I think. Things need to be looked at specifically.
Okay, thank you very much, Ben.
I'm, yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, Craig? Are you there?
Yes.
So, Craig, this is for, uh, business zone, uh, PD zone. And industrial zone, correct?
Correct. All of those zones.
And, uh. If somebody is interested in it, they would still have to apply. For a special exception and comply with all kinds of rules for buffering and, and. Numerous other things. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, if they wanted a brew pub or any place where there would be, uh, consumption of, of alcohol on the premises. Yes, they would need a special permit from you. If they wanted just to open a conventional brewery, which is really just a factory. That they would be able to do without a special permit, but anything involving a brew pub. Um, food being eaten there, alcohol being drunk there in, in, in large numbers, that would require a special permit from the commission.
And, and they would not get automatic, uh, outside dining that would have to go through a process, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Um. I'll open it up to other commissioners. Have any comments? Is, is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this?
Commissioner Payne, my only. Yes, my only concern is again, like I said, the noise and you said that that's going to be regulated. We're going to be able to regulate that. And also. The trash that's left with, uh, you know, it's common that common knowledge that in some areas where the people just drop stuff on the ground. So. I would be concerned as to who would be responsible for picking up the stuff. After the truck leaves or at the end of the day.
Okay, that would be the businesses responsible for keeping their. Their property, uh, clean. And it doesn't have to be a brewery pub. It could be any business that could cause undue noise and undue trash. I'm out picking up trash around my property. Four times a week. Um, it's gotten worse lately. Um, so those, those kinds of things are just normal, uh, day to day business things. And the, the noise thing would be taken care of under the special exception. Um, Commissioner, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Claffey had a question. I'll let you wrap it up, Stanley, and then Commissioner Claffey.
Yeah, I know McDonald's has people go out in the, in the turnpike early in the morning about five thirty, six o'clock, picking up the medians from the trash and stuff. That's my only. That was my only concern. I just wanted to bring that up. That's all. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Claffey?
No, I think everyone, you know, kind of circled the wagon here and, and we all have concerns. I just look at it as again, there, there's opening up to every, the whole town. We know it's going to be a special permit. So. You know, I just think we need to move some. Move to, to get a little. Uh, up to the times. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Claffey. Do, uh. Is there any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Back to your, uh, your last comment about the food trucks. I support that. I think it's a good mix between the two. Um, I think the only caveat being as long as parking is available for it. Um, I think the two. Uh, together. And I think, uh, it would help small businesses and. Help the, whether it be a brew hub or distillery, um. Keep their business going.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods. Commissioner Claffey, you have another question?
No, just to. For Mr. Planner. Um. If this goes through, there would be definitely a spot on the. Application for the food truck because I would hate to approve something in the future. With no food truck and then food trucks start to appear. So I definitely want it. Specific when we do a special permit that it's specific to. You know, the extras. If the food truck's an extra, granted, we don't have a. Uh, uh. A regulation for that specific mobile machine. But that it is part of the whole. Uh, it's like, uh, it's like an arm of the business.
If, if Anthony, if they didn't come in for it originally and then all of a sudden they wanted to add it.
Okay.
They would have to come in and modify their site plan.
Okay, thank you.
So, so they couldn't just do it on their own. They would have to come in and modify our site plans. I think I'm. I think I'm correct. Correct, uh, Craig?
Yes, and they'd have to modify their special permit also.
Yes, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners' questions on this? Craig, do you feel comfortable moving this forward? Or is there too much for you to add that you want to double check on?
Well, the, the one thing that I was going to start to add was to address Commissioner Claffey's suggestion. That we make it clear that a distillery could also have some kind of a sit down. Uh, more than just a tasting room, but, but, uh, I guess the equivalent of a brew club. But then Commissioner Lenar is pointed out, and I, and I, I think I agree with Commissioner Lenar is. That we really want, I think, the distillery regulation to mirror the brewery. Regulation exactly. And the brewery. Definition. Talks about tastings being allowed and tours. But not. But not the kind of. Dining experience, I'll call it, that a brew pub would allow. So I'm going to suggest we, we. Leave the definitions as I presented. Which would not allow then a distillery to have a. Anything more than just a tasting, um, um, ability.
What, they couldn't consume on the property?
So what?
Well, they could do tastings, what, and I'm not sure what a tasting is, but I imagine it's. You walk up to the counter and maybe pay five bucks and like, like in a wine, like a winery, you pay five bucks and you get to taste some wines. As opposed to the brew pub experience we're talking about where you go in, you buy, you buy a bunch of beer, you sit around with your friends, you drink the beer. Um, I think that's the distinction that, that I want to preserve here.
I thought they'd be similar.
Distillery is allowed by rights in the industrial zone, the way I presented it. And I don't know, I don't think we want. Distilleries to be able to have what I'm calling a dining experience without having to go through the special permit process. And the way it's set up. A distillery could, could open up tomorrow because it's really just a manufacturing activity.
Oh, not if they include the food truck, not if they. You know. So it should all be special exception. For both of these.
Yep, uh, Commissioner Payne or Chairman Payne?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Claffey.
If you go back to the brewery, you're saying. Alvarium, let's use the example, and we've talked about it on John Downey Drive in New Britain, Alvarium Brewery. Is a seller of their product and a seller of their product for onsite. Consumption and offsite consumption. And that's classified a brewery. So in our definition. You can only, you can't sit at a brewery and drink their beer. You have to leave the facility.
Correct.
That's, that.
That's not what we want.
That's, that's like.
Well, I think it is what you want, Chairman, because that. Otherwise, every distillery or brewery would have to come before you for a special permit, even the ones that are just. A brewery or distillery with no onsite consumption.
So it, so let me ask you this, Mr. Planner. So you're saying. They would come under the classification of a brew pub. Is that how you split the definitions up?
Well, I would create, if that's what the commission wants, and I'll do that, is create. And a new category. Which I'm going to call distillery. Pub for the moment, so I can come up something better.
No, but, okay. The, the first sentence of brew pub and brewery. Are. Are totally different. The brew, you're not talking about storage of it at a brewery. But at a brew pub, you're talking about storage. Uh, so I, I guess now you've completely confused me with your definitions.
Alright, let's.
I mean, we're gonna have to table it because it's not what. You're.
Alright, Craig, go ahead. Then Commissioner Lenars.
Well, I was just gonna say to Commissioner, uh, Claffey, I'm, I'm looking at the definition of brew pub. And I'm lining it up with brewery and the first sentence. Is exactly. Well, let's see. No, the first sentence is for both of them is a facility used for manufacturing. Bottling. Well, then warehousing and distributing, but the other says bottling and storage. Of beer products, including tasting. Now, then they divert, um. Um, I think I need to work on this a little bit.
Yeah. We can work on this.
Commissioner Payne?
Just a minute, Commissioner, um. So Vieski, Commissioner Lenars has been waiting. Commissioner Lenars, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I think what Craig did initially was developing these three different. Uh, classifications of. Brewery, brew pub. And brew pub restaurant. And I think they're distinctly different in all of them and has. Craig has stressed if a brewery wanted to come in and brew their own beer. They can do that without any special exception because they're an industry type business and they can do that without our approval because it was just another type of a business. Now, going forward in the evolution of what this brewery has been in the last few years, they developed into brew pubs. Where people are sitting down within the facility, buying them, tasting them, drinking them, however you want to describe it, but being in the facility and drinking them. That has developed now. And now even further, there's brew pub restaurant. So I think Craig did a great job with. The three classifications of them and. How we special, then special exception them is up to us going forward. I just think that the distillery. Should have three different classifications as well. Because I think you might see this business evolve someday into a distillery pub restaurant where they make their own whiskeys and people can buy them, sit there. Under special exception, of course. Um, consume them on the facility and have either a. Food truck be outside if it was a pub type facility with no indoor type restaurant. Or if they went for the brew pub restaurant where there's some indoor or inside. Type of a restaurant on the facility, they could have their whiskey, consume it and order food within that same restaurant. I just think that distillery should be. Labelled three ways, just like the breweries were.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenars. Great suggestions. Um. Craig?
Yes.
Uh, maybe you can, maybe you can work on, uh, on, on, on this a little longer. Um, let's see, Commissioner Solbyski had a question, right?
Yes, um. Is Commissioner Payne, Chairman Payne, my, my suggestion would be to look in New Britain's regulations, look at some of the other towns that have these and let's see, let's try to see how they did them. It's only a suggestion. I mean, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I listened to what you said. And some of it makes sense, some doesn't. So let's just see how some of the other ones do it. I mean, I know there's one, like I says, I know Willie Brew is a little manic. I know several in New Britain. I'm just wondering how they do it. So maybe just try to not necessarily mirror it, but. Use it as a guideline. That's all I'm suggesting.
Thank you, Commissioner Slobieski. Commissioner Fox?
Uh, I agree with Commissioner Lenars and. Uh, around the, than you about. Excuse me. Uh, having, uh, having three, uh, three, three distinct definitions of distillery, but I have a question and maybe, uh, I'm a little dense. But, uh, distillery, uh, would be allowed to warehouse. And every, all the others, not all the others would be stored. Uh, I'm assuming that when you call it a warehouse. Storing it there. For delivery to another retail organization. And for the storage, you're storing it there for your own use.
Could be, it could be for anything, your own use in the bill, in the thing, or why can't somebody, um, warehouse their product for distribution?
I'm not, yeah, I'm just asking you if there's a difference between warehouse and storage.
Well, Craig is going to correct some of these definitions and, and, um, try to, try to refine them for our next meeting. So maybe he'll.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fox. So, um.
Can we, may I ask a question? We just to move this along. Can we table this and put it to? Uh. Uh, move it along to old business or, or not, you know, just keep it open so we can bring it up at the next meeting. So in the two weeks. Like Commissioner Lenar said, uh, we just. Asked Mr. Minor to make those definition adjustments and then move forward at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we have to leave it open though. Craig, is that correct?
I would recommend you keep it open.
Okay.
Which is not a problem because you can close the hearing at the next meeting and then move it to old business and act on it that night anyway.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So I want to make sure though, Craig, that you're in full, uh, understanding of what the commission wants is. Um. I think everybody was, uh. Um, in favor of what Commissioner Lenars and Commissioner Woods were stating on it. And, um. Giving the option of the food truck, uh, in there. So, um, hopefully you have enough information and, um, and, um, from us.
Yes, I think I do. And if, when I sit down to type it all up tomorrow or the next day, I realize I'm confused, Chairman Payne, I'll just call you.
Okay, very good. Alright, so, um, we'll, um. We'll leave this, uh, public hearing open. Petition ten twenty will leave open. Next thing on the agenda is the, um. Uh, approval of minutes. Um, entertain a motion to, wait a minute, we have a correction of one of the minutes here. Um, Commissioner Claffey?
Just again, the May thirteenth minutes still show me the copy I got in the mail, show me absent and I was there. So I'd like it changed and, uh. Uh, that we don't approve the May thirteenth meeting. Uh, I don't have a problem with the May. I think it's twenty. It's kind of a seven and a nine to get twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
I don't have a problem with the twenty seventh, May twenty.
So, um.
Make a motion to approve May twenty seventh meeting.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Slobieski to approve May twenty seventh. And seconded by Commissioner Claffey. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. So we'll, we'll leave the, uh, Craig, you'll, you'll make a correction on the minutes for, uh, May thirteenth.
Well, actually, um, the easy way to do it is to approve the minutes with the correction that Commissioner Claffey just asked us to make.
Okay.
And that way it's done.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion with the correction that, uh, Commissioner Claffey was there.
Question. I'll amend the motion. Commissioner Payne, I'll amend the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a second?
Second. Whatever. You don't have anything in writing that says I was there other than a voice. So you're going to take the voice on the commissioner of the May twenty seventh meeting as. There's nothing in paper that says I was there. If you look at the May thirteenth in five years, it's going to say I wasn't there.
Well, he's going to.
May thirteenth, I was there.
He is. We're going to approve the minutes.
Right, but there's nothing we could. Right, and there's no, we can't physically, we can't physically remove the minutes that were filed. Right, and there's no, we can't physically, we can't physically remove the minutes that were filed back on May 22nd. So unfortunately.
The May 13th minutes were never approved.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Okay, but they've been on, they're on file in accordance with state statute, so.
All right, just.
They will always unfortunately physically exist.
Come, uh, James, did you want to add something?
Anytime that a set of minutes has an incorrect, uh, statement or anything in it, that correction is made at the next meeting minutes. So those will be part of this meeting's minutes that you are currently holding, underneath the minutes approval section. The original set of minutes that are filed in the clerk's office under FOI must remain as they are. So the commission itself will make the physical change during this meeting.
And it will show, it'll show as a line item in the approval of the minutes that you modified the May 13th minutes, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. That's, that's, I want it written there like that.
Yes, it'll indicate under attendance that Mr. Claffey was indicated as absent, but was present during the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Claffey. Commissioner Fox?
Yeah, so, do, I, I would think that we would need a motion. Now, I'll move to, uh.
We have a motion made by Sobieski.
Yeah, but does that include, that, does that include an amendment, uh, an amendment to include, uh, Commissioner Claffey as being as, as attending?
We, we voted on the, the May 27th ones already. We have a motion.
I'm not, I'm talking about the May 13th.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Sobieski to, to approve the minutes with the correction that, that, uh, Commissioner Claffey was in attendance.
Cool, I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner second. If, there's no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, um. Next thing on the agenda is petition 17 dash 20, site plan approval, gas station, convenience stores at Four Hartford Avenue, uh, Delia LLC, applicant, Newington Gas Distributors LLC owner, Javar Shaw Hope, Three Bucks Crossing Cromwell, Connecticut, uh, Connecticut contact. Apologize for pronouncing, uh, your name incorrectly. Is the applicant here?
We are here, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Craig, do you want to start off? Give us a review where we're at?
Yes. All right, so we had the public hearing at the last meeting on the special exception, which is, as the commission knows, the, the conceptual approval of this activity. And now tonight, we're gonna talk about the site plan. And, uh, in your agenda packet, you, you got copies of my comment, you got copies of the town engineer's comments, and I know Attorney Slater, and if, if Brandon Hanfield is here, he'll also want to speak to, to those comments. But, so at that point, I think I'd like to turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, uh, there's been a lot of progress since that public hearing, um, and Brendan Hanfield can speak to that in a few moments. Uh, I believe the architect is also available to go through, uh, elevations, which, uh, he was not able to do that during the special, uh, during the public hearing. Uh, one of the issues I had mentioned during the public hearing was, I thought there was a question, or I was corrected, there was a question raised about section 6.1.1.3, which is the 100-foot distance, uh, from the, uh, the, the motor vehicle-related use, and the, uh, and then any near, nearby, uh, religious institution, playground, hospital, or residence. And as I understood it, as I mentioned during the public hearing, was that there was a question with respect to how you measure the distance, whether it's from the structure itself, or whether it's related to the property itself, and that's what I, I thought the issues were about. I, uh, did an analysis in the, in the, the letter is here, uh, but it turns out we're in agreement on that point, and there's a whole new issue that we understood, uh, is in play today, that we'll, I'll get to in just a moment. But my interpretation of the regulation, and apparently the town engineer and the town planner agree with it, um, and I think you would as well, that regulation requires that there would be a distance between the motor vehicle, uh, related use entrance and one of those structures. It doesn't matter how close you are to the boundary, what matters is whether you're close to the playground, whether you're close to the residence. Uh, so we're in agreement on that. The issue that we, that is before the commission uh, really relates, uh, to, or at least we're in agreement, obviously, the commission is the one who ultimately decides, but the language refers to a reference to how many feet it is from the religious institution, the school, playground, the hospital, or the residence. Other regulations that you have make it very clear when it has to be a certain distance from a zone. There is no religious institution zone, school zone, playground. So obviously, that wasn't intended to apply it to a distance to a particular zone. Um, and also your regulations, you have many, several instances where you refer to distances from boundaries, and it doesn't say that here either. So I think the language is very clear that what's intended is you want, uh, the entrance and exits from the use, uh, to be from a distance from the actual building. And, um, I'll come back to this, because I think it'll be easier for me to touch on the legal issues, which are really twofold, that we realized were in play this afternoon, uh, that if you use, there's an existing curb cut from Hartford Avenue, uh, and it was a former, uh, gas station, and that use has not been abandoned. So it's a non-conforming use. And we presented a plan during the public hearing that we believe is, uh, in full compliance, and we still do, and I, and I'll explain why, uh, the interpretation of the regulations, when you have a multiple-use property. In this case, there's gonna be a convenience store, which is a permitted use. There is no requirement there that entrances be a certain distance from any other use for that commercial use, and it has the related use. Um, and then underlying it all is the fact that regulations that were adopted after the, the existence of that non-conforming use can't prevent the re-establishment of the, the gas station. So, um, we believe we're in full compliance, but to the extent that we're not, the regulations can't be applied to prohibit the re-establishment of, of the gas station part of the property. But I'll come back to this issue, because you'll understand why, you know, why it's important. Uh, and I have another, uh, we have a couple of documents that we, we can show you after, I'll let Brandon Hanfield take over and go over the, what he's accomplished, uh, with the town engineer to do, address the, I think there were 78 comments that we received just before the public hearing. So, uh, some good work has, has been done between then and now, and I'll turn the floor over to him to, to go over where we are. If he's online. Brandon, you with us?
Oh, I, I am with you. I don't know, I'm gonna make sure I'm not muted here. Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for the record, Brandon Hanfield, civil engineer with Yantick River Consultants. Um, first and foremost, I went through a pretty detailed presentation of the site plan as part of the public hearing, and I, I'm happy to go through that detail again, or just, uh, kind of go to the progress since that meeting. I'll leave it up to, uh, however the commission would like.
Dominic mute.
Commit, could applicant, could the applicant just, um, instead of going over the whole, uh, previous presentation, just address the, uh, new problems, or address the engineer's problems?
Sure. Um, going through the engineer's comments, uh, in summary, we've responded to them all, and, uh, are in agreement or can address them all, um, with simple minor plan revisions, additional information, uh, with regards to calculations to confirm our design. Um, so, uh, you know, in short, uh, we've addressed Gary's comments, and, um, a revised plan can be submitted to them, uh, confirming our responses. Um, there were a few issues, and I believe Attorney Slater touched on it with regards to, um, the setback from the residences to the gas station use and to our access drives. Um, that one was left for, for further conversation today, and, uh, perhaps, I don't know if we have the plan.
Which document are you looking for, Brandon?
Uh, sheet number two.
Is that the one you sent through about six o'clock tonight?
Uh, no, we can go to the original or the, or the, let's go to the original first.
You want page two, you said?
Yes, please. Right there is fine, perfect. Um, so again, this is sheet two, the site layout. Um, no changes have been performed since the public hearing, uh, but we did respond. So, uh, on this plan, and I, I apologize, I have a cursor, so I can point to it, but, um, the proposed convenience store is parallel with the northerly boundary, uh, and it's labeled as 2,640 square feet. Um, there's a sidewalk to the south of it, and then right where at the center point, you'll see two arced lines, or a little unclear on this image, but your plans show them clearly. That's the 100-foot setback from the residences to the north of our convenience store. So on this plan, we do show um, that 100-foot measurement from the, uh, closest residential structures. And, uh, what we intended on this plan is that the actual gas station use, um, so the pumps, the canopy, the access drives to those pumped and canopies, and the parking are all further than 100 feet, um, from the residences. Um, so I think what, what's, you know, gonna be further discussed today is if you project that line out, um, and the classification of these access drives to the site is what, um, we'll discuss further, and how we can, how we interpreted that, or how we believe, um, we comply, and, uh, we'll, we'll take some information from the commission on that.
Is it possible, Ken Slater, for the record, is it possible to pull up those two sheets that, uh, Brandon had sent this afternoon that not might highlight, and I might better explain where the, where the issue is? All right, so in the language that you have in that 6.1.1.3 talks about, uh, the distance to the entrance. Uh, and so if you see the, you know, the pink color or lilac color two, uh, parts of a radius, that's the 100-foot lines from the resident, nearest residential units. So the question, first of all, the backdrop is, again, what I said before, that entrance from Hartford, uh, Road already exists in that form. And then there's no dispute that the restaurant, that the gas station was already there. Uh, so although we want to be fully compliant, and we think there's a way we can be fully compliant with the regulations, even if we are not, and this, the new regulation that you adopted and imposed the 100-foot setback, that can't be used to prevent, uh, the re-establishment of the gas station component. Now, if it didn't have a gas station component, the existing, uh, entrance to the whole facility is fully in compliance. There's no 100-foot setback for the convenience store. So if there are only a convenience store there, then this is fully compliant. If we did not have a non-conforming right to be able to re-establish the gas station, um, and we only had the gas station on this site, it would not be compliant, because we, we agree that that entrance, uh, from Hartford Avenue would be the entrance that would be subject to that. Um, again, I'm, our main position is the fact that you can disregard that specific regulation for as far as it would prevent the re-establishment of the gas station because of the non-conforming use. But there's another point I, I discussed with, with Craig, uh, this afternoon, and I, I don't think we're in, in agreement on it, but, um, what I'd like to, to point out to you is to be careful in the way that you interpret this. This is a relatively small site, but there could be much larger sites, um, in which there are more than one uses on the property. And is the question in that regulation, how, where exactly the entrance is for the whole plaza? Or are we worried, concerned about where the entrance is to the motor vehicle-related use? And what, uh, Brandon had done is, when he showed it met the setbacks, he was drawing the setbacks again from the canopies and the, where automobiles would enter in to be refueled. And it definitely, that aspect of the use is 100 feet away. Um, so that's the way that he interpreted it. Sorry about that, I'm new to myself accidentally. We thought that the concern was whether or not you measured it from the property boundary or not. Now, um, is it, did, uh, John, were you able to get that, uh, aerial of the Target store? Were, were you able to get that from Craig that I sent late, late today? Not sure.
But I don't think we, let me, um, let me ask the town planner, Craig, do you, uh, do you have any problems with this? Could you, uh?
Mute, Craig.
Yeah, right. Um, well, I understand Attorney Slater's point. My point, when I discussed it with him this, this afternoon, was that if you go back and look at the regulation, it says that entrances and exits shall be 100 feet. And I think what that means is entrances and exits to the, to the entire site need to be 100 feet from the nearest home, not, not the, the approach to the gas pumps, but rather the, the curb cuts, I'll call them curb cuts. But that's what the 100 feet is supposed to measure.
So you, so you don't think the curb cuts are 100 feet away from the, um, residents?
Right, well, we know the arc. Again, if you look at that purple arc, it shows the driveway onto Hartford is within the 100 feet. But Attorney Slater is suggesting that, that you don't measure that from the house to the curb cut. You measure from the house to the canopies. That's his argument. And I don't, I don't agree, but I don't, I don't disagree strongly enough to, 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 to try to over, overwhelm his, his point.
You gotta, you gotta remember that, you gotta remember that he has approval for a gas station in here, basically, as a non-conforming use, and we can't take that away from him. We can't kill this. And I believe that, uh, what he's coming in here with is a, a huge improvement, uh, to compare, compared to what it is today, and adding the convenience store and the nice landscaping and, and bringing the entrance, entranceways back from the intersection a little bit. Uh, the only thing I might want to add as additional protection for the residents, uh, is possibly, um, um, a, a screened fence in the back, uh, depending on how much of the tree line is taken down and, and so that we can protect the residents with the proper buffer and everything, which I'm sure the applicant's not gonna be, um, uh, worried about. I'll turn it over to the, uh, Attorney Slater.
I'll, there was an image that was shown, I won't discuss it now, uh, in, in that, in light of your chairman, the chairman's comments, because I, I think you're absolutely right, the non-conforming use is what protects us to be able to do what we're doing. Because if we followed, if we had to follow this, or you didn't agree with my, my analysis, because basically, without showing you the image, um, why I was concerned is if you had a big plaza, and I had the Target as an example, the entrance from the Target, there is a residence across from it. I'm not sure it's 100 feet, it might be more than 100 feet, but it's, it's not far away. Um, if the Target wanted to put a gas, some gas pumps all the way on the other side in its, in its parking lot, like Doppin Shop has done, and BJ's has done, um, and, and it was acceptable to the commission, um, it would be hundreds of feet away from that entrance. So my point in, in what Craig and I were discussing is, I agree with him that the entrance into the, into the building, or into the, from the road, is what you would use if it was the only use on the site. But if you have a shopping plaza, this is a smaller one than a full shopping plaza, but if you has a plaza with a permitted use, um, then the distance, you wouldn't measure, you wouldn't be, uh, you, you wouldn't be able to put the gas pumps behind the Target, uh, if the 100 feet was from the entrance out of the whole Target Plaza, even though you don't have a 100-foot limitation. But I won't get into it in any more detail than that. I could show the, the other image if there's issues, other members of the commission on that. But I think the ability to use the non-conforming use here is the protection, and if we did move the entrances, first of all, we should have a right to use the existing curb cut on Hartford, and the location of the one on Main Street i- is, is perfectly located across from another, uh, entrance onto Main, which makes it safer. If we had to push it closer to the intersection, it, it could be done from an engineering standpoint, uh, but it is not, uh, it, it's not ideal. I think the design that's there now, from an engineering standpoint, uh, is excellent, and I think we would have the right to do it as part of the non-conformity, and all the aspects of the convenience store um, are in compliance, and, and we've improved the conformity. If the only thing we're not conforming with is this new 100-foot rule, and everything else is in conformity, it is an improvement over the, 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 the former non-conforming, uh, non-conforming use.
I, I agree with you. Let me see, we have a commissioner's question. Uh, Commissioner Claffey, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, I, yes, um, the question I have is, is while this was a, uh, gas station prior to now being a corner lot, was the curb, I, I just, I kind of remember that there was no real curb cut, it was just an open curb.
You're right, Commissioner.
On Main Street.
Uh, or on Main Street. Or on Main Street, possibly on Hartford Avenue. And it kind of mirrored what's across the street at the Sunoco, which on one side of the Sunoco, it's an open curb all the way up to the residential house. If you're on Main Street, so trying to, 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 you know, I know we're trying to cut hairs here. But I mean, I think it's an improvement with a, I don't think you're, you're, maybe the engineer can correct me from all the drawings he's seen. But you're putting in a, a true entrance on this Hartford Avenue, which has become the, kind of the little bone here of contention with the curb cut. But remember, I don't know, fifteen years ago, it was open the whole way. So the cars, I think, entered within that zone to begin with when it was a gas station prior. Am I correct or am I wrong?
Yeah, I think you're correct, Commissioner Claffey. It was a wide open entrance on both sides. And, and this is an improvement of the situation that was there years ago.
And one thing I'd also add is if, if you did require us to move on the Hartford Avenue side, move it closer to the intersection. I don't think from an engineering standpoint, from a general planning and zoning standpoint, moving the entrance closer to the intersection is a good idea. But if you did require that, there is a legitimate chance, maybe even a good chance, that DOT would not approve that curb cut. And then we'd be in never, never land. We would have your condition that we would require to move it down. Whereas we're very confident that this location, because there's existing curb cuts there on the Hartford Ave side and improving it with the design that that Brendan Hanfield put together. It is something that, that DOT will not have a problem with.
Can I ask one more question, Chairman?
Go ahead.
With the, with the Hartford Ave curb cuts, you made mention the Main Street curb cut aligns with the shopping center across the street, I may say. And the Hartford Ave curb cuts, they kind of align with the, the, what's it, the Giovanna, the bakery, right? Not bigger, deli or bakery right across the street. They kind of.
Chicken gourmet.
Will it, will they align somewhat like that to mitigate the, and I think it might be in your traffic report, but you're asking for these curb cuts this way to kind of mitigate the traffic patterns, I would assume, am I incorrect in that thought?
Brandon, you want to step back on this one?
Sure, to answer your question, we pushed the entrance, the left turn in entrance off of Hartford Avenue as far away from the intersection as we could, while still providing access and turning movements. And it is generally aligned with the driveways across the street. So, and we also, you know, if you're familiar with the site, there is a small curved island with a large utility pole and sign. We are keeping that utility pole there, and that's why there is an island. Because of that utility pole and the existing island condition, we had to maintain that.
Any other questions from any other commissioners? Commissioner Sobieski, go ahead.
Yes, I, I have, the site panel looks great to me. I wish I had seen the engineer's report, though. I did have a question on page three of the plan. You go there, you're going to see there's two twelve thousand gallon US tanks in there. The tank that's closest to the Main Street side, can you tell me how far that is away from the property line? It looks to me like it's less than ten feet away.
I will measure that for you right now. So where we show these tanks is that's a little over six feet to the property line.
My question is, is that, what is the closest that could be to a property? I know, how's, I know residential's got to be ten feet away off the property line. I'm just asking a question.
No, it's, it's a good question. And what we raised with the engineer, because they also asked about that proximity. It's how you're going to shore the excavation. And admittedly, those details are going to be designed by our environmental fuel engineer. And the tank itself, its distribution system to the fuel pumps and all of that information will be provided to the town. Those get, those tanks might move a little bit based on their design. We showed them just to give you a scale of the tanks that you desire.
That's, that's a fair enough answer. I guess the other, the other question I had is the, I know there's, there's wells in there now to monitor the groundwater. Who would be maintaining that? It would be, that still be deep or would that be your responsibility? Just a, just a question.
The existing monitoring wells or the new ones?
Well, the new ones and the existing, that's my question.
I'd have to defer, I think it'd be the same information you'd get as part of the environmental fuel design is how the monitoring is going to occur and how the applicant slash operator runs it.
The prior owner has the responsibility for the contamination that was, that was cleaned up and monitoring. I, you know, it's possible that in the transaction, and I'm, I can't speak to it specifically, the new owner could take on certain responsibilities of that and day to day maintenance and that sort of thing. But from a, from a legal standpoint, from deep standpoint, the, the previously responsible party who submitted as part of the Transfer Act, the one that would be responsible for that. And the good news is that it was brought into full compliance with the remediation standards. It just has to be continued.
I just, attorney Slater, I just wanted to make sure that these did, you know, that these people weren't going to get stuck with it. That's all I was concerned with.
Fair enough.
I, can I add something? Can I?
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jawah Shallow. I did want to say that there are existing monitoring wells right now. With the construction and everything going on, they will probably be removed, of course, with all the digging. There's a new system that many gas stations are using now where there's not a well under the ground anymore. And we were hoping to use that system instead. It, it makes a report every single day. Nobody has to actually come pull water or pull anything from the well. It reports, it pulls out a report from your back office and it's a lot easier. And it will save a lot of money, actually, too, so.
And show you exactly everything what's in ground, like.
So instead of putting new monitoring wells in, we were hoping to use.
You're talking about the new one that you're going to be putting in?
Yes, that's not.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking about, I'm asking about the existing one that's in there now. I just don't want you to.
Probably end up being removed with the construction, though.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Because they're not mine. They're, they're the current owners and monitoring wells, I believe the way that the law works cannot be transferred easily. It's very difficult to transfer the monitoring wells.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure how it works either. I just wanted, I don't want to see you get stuck with something, that's all.
Very, it's a good point. We'll do the best, make sure she's protected or they're protected.
Okay, any other commissioners have any questions? Commissioner, Attorney Slater, there was two points that you were most concerned about. One was the engineering work on the tanks that the town engineer wanted you to perform ahead of time. Has he agreed with you that that's not necessary at this stage?
That's my understanding. Can you confirm that, Brandon?
Yes, that can come later after local end use approvals.
Okay, we have no other issues with the town engineer on the, on his report, is that correct?
I do not.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions? I think this is a, a huge improvement for the town. Is there anybody from the, well, this is not a public hearing, so. Any other commissioners have anything?
Chairman Payne?
Yes.
Good, good, Attorney Slater, could you discuss the sidewalk issue for a moment that the town engineer brought up?
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Minor and I spoke about it and it was a case, the town engineer would like us to, or my clients, to construct the sidewalk on Hartford Avenue on, in public way. There's a Supreme Court case called Buttermilk that said that that's not permissible. We can't be required to make an improvement like that. But we can be asked. And the answer to, to, if you're asking us to do that, I mean, it will not connect to an existing sidewalk. It's another expense on a small business person who's trying to, to make what I think, it sounds like you're agreeing is a great plan. So we would prefer not to be required to do that. That said, it's important to the commission to condition it. I'll acknowledge on the record that, that we won't, even though we have a legal right to challenge it under Buttermilk, without question. You can't require us to do that. That if it was important to you and you wouldn't approve this but for requiring the installation of, of, of a sidewalk, we wouldn't let that approval slip away on us or want to get into a protracted litigation over requiring us to do something that you can't require us to do.
Now, where was that, on Hartford Avenue?
Correct.
Which goes to nowhere on that side of the street.
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, that, that's a huge burden. I, I wouldn't want to, I don't know if that's really necessary. I'll open it up to the other commissioners. Anybody else have anything else?
Commissioner Payne?
Yes. Commissioner Hayes.
One thing I noticed, it's actually under old business, but since we were talking about the groundwater sensors. In petition sixteen twenty, it mentions, you know, it what, that the property had been the subject of a longstanding environmental remediation. Having not been on the TBZ that long ago, how bad was the, was the contamination? What's the status of it now? Will the construction further, you know, make it better or in, in any case, make it worse before they start building anything?
I'll ask the applicant to address that.
Yeah, I, I reviewed, just like you review a legal opinion, you go to the last page first and then, and then you can read the rest of it. The same thing is true about the final environmental report. And the, the good news, it was certified by a licensed environmental professional under the standards, the cleanup standards, that it is fully in compliance with those standards. The work that we're doing, if there was any excavation of any soil that was, was contaminated, there'd be an obligation to, to dispose of that in that way, which would make the site better, because currently it's fully compliant if no one does anything. So in the construction, if anything will make it better if they do encounter any soils that they have to, to deal with. But the work that they're proposing is consistent with the approvals that were issued by, well, the approvals weren't issued by deep under their program, a licensed environmental professional can sign off on them. So they're in full compliance, there just has to be some additional monitoring. And frankly, I don't think the, the work is going to make any difference at all based on, on what's, what, what's happened before. But at, you know, best case, it's going to improve rather than setback what's already been done.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Claffey?
I, I just would agree with Chairman Payne on the sidewalk concern. There's no sidewalk there currently. It's an undue burden on these people who are making a vast improvement, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Claffey. Is there any other commissioners have anything else? Commissioner Lenars?
Yeah, just to echo what we've been talking about, I think the including of the sidewalk is useless if it's not going anywhere. That's a burden on the, on the applicant, I'd be totally against that. Also with concerning what with Attorney Slater said, he brought up and keeps alluding to that Target slide, I thought it was a pretty good reference point, even though he really didn't get into it. If any of the commissioners are stuck, and I use the word stuck as Mr. Commissioner Sobieski said that, I'd hate to see any applicant get stuck somewhere. But that Target reference was good because it allowed that magenta line to either come into play or not come into play. And obviously, I don't think it does based on some other properties that we have in the town. So if any of the commissioners are stuck on that, and if they feel that a further explanation by Attorney Slater with that Target reference, I think that could help anybody. And if not, no big deal. But Attorney Slater, I thought that was a good reference point to allude any confusion on that magenta line that we talked about.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenars. Commissioner Sobieski?
Yes, I, I agree. I think the thing is, we don't need the sidewalk on Hartford Avenue since it goes nowhere and it's an undue burden on, on a developer. I also agree that, I think that there's no issue with the, with the hundred foot buffer. I mean, with, yeah, with the hundred foot buffer, just my opinion. Like I said, I don't want to see him get stuck with anything that's undue, unduly cost prohibitive to him, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Sobieski. Any other commissioners have anything? If there's no objection, could we have a motion to close, move petition seventeen twenty to Old Business for Action?
I make a motion. Seventeen twenty to Old Business for Action.
Motion made by Commissioner Claffey, could I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sobieski. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, so we will.
Could I mention one thing? Not about this, because you've already closed it. I just wanted, not trying to curry favor on our application, but I've participated in a lot of these meetings as town attorney and as applicant. And I just want to compliment how well you and your staff are doing, struggling through showing plans and people understanding what the plans are. So thank you for letting us do it. But I just wanted to take a minute to tell you, you guys are doing a great job of using this platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Slater, I appreciate it. Okay, our next thing on the agenda is petition eighteen dash twenty, which is the fireworks tent sale section three point two, three point one B at thirty one sixty four Berlin Turnpike. Phantom Fireworks Eastern Region LLC applicant, Newington VF LLC owner Joshua Nielsen, fifty nine East Street, Vernon, Connecticut, contact. I believe this has all been done last year. And I'll have Craig, our town planner, give us a report on this.
Okay, well, as the chairman said, this is a repeat from last year. It's the same location as last year. I did not receive any complaints or problems with it last year. I ran it by the new fire marshal earlier this week, or last week, and he has no objections to the location. So I believe Mr. Nielsen is, is in the room to speak to this, I believe.
Yes, good evening, commission. So, yes, like the planner said, it's going to be the same location as last year on the Turnpike by Staples. Everything is going to remain the same. It's going to be a twenty by thirty tent. We're going to be open this year from June twenty fourth to July fourth. So we'll actually open one day less this year. Same product assortment, everything that's on legal in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you. Could you address for the commission, where are you planning on putting any signs? Because your setback from the Turnpike, just so that we get it on the record, so everybody knows what you're doing.
Yeah, so absolutely. So I had submitted to Andrew for the signs and he had mentioned that they were not requiring a permit for them due to COVID. So we will have two signs attached to the tent and that'll be all we will have for signage.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, if there's no objection or no questions, I'll entertain that we move petition eighteen dash twenty to Old Business for Action.
I'll make a motion, we move petition eighteen twenty to, for action tonight to Old Business.
Motion made by Commissioner Sobieski, second.
Anthony Claffey, second.
Very good. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So why don't we address that under Old Business first? There's a motion in our packet. Petition eighteen dash twenty. Commissioner Claffey, could you read the motion?
I make a motion, petition eighteen dash twenty. I move to approve petition eighteen dash twenty, Firework Tent Sale Section three point two, three point one point B at three one six four Berlin Turnpike, Phantom Fireworks Eastern Region LLC applicant, Newington VF LLC owner Joshua Nielsen, fifty nine East Street, Vernon, Connecticut, contact, no conditions.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Claffey and seconded by Commissioner Sobieski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The the next thing that we have on the Old Business is.
Hold on one second. Chairman Payne? John knows he can discuss picking up permits with the planner, he can leave the meeting unless there's something else for him.
Yeah, Craig?
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Nielsen, you're all done. You want to give me a call tomorrow, I can tell you how quickly we can send you your approval.
Excellent, thank you all very much, have a great night.
Thank you, good luck. Okay, the. Craig, do you have motions for both of these?
No, I don't have motions for the special permit or the site plan. I kind of went a little quicker than I thought.
Okay.
But I can say that the special permit would be, I would recommend to be approved with no conditions because I didn't hear any conditions coming out of the I didn't hear any concerns from the commission that would that would result in a condition for approval. As far as the special, the gas station itself, I recommend approval subject to the applicants addressing the town engineers comments.
Well, that so the well, the applicants for the engineers applicants page. But but this page from the engineer isn't updated. Is it?
I'm sorry, I lost you for a second.
If we if we approved it based on the May twenty seventh letter, does the applicant have a problem with that? Is Attorney Slater still there?
I am. Brandon, are you still there? Because he is the one who spoke directly with the town engineer. My guess is that that is evolved. So if the condition is to come to satisfy the concerns of the town engineer with the exception of the of the one hundred foot distance and the exception of the sidewalk that you've already touched on. I think we're okay with that rather than tie to the specific report that's there. So just be to satisfy the concerns that have been addressed. Brandon, are you still on or not? Because he certainly might have left.
I'm still on and that's accurate. The everything on that list can be addressed with minor revisions and plan changes. Except for the sidewalk and setback issues which were resolved at the meeting tonight.
So was the sidewalk on this page?
The sidewalk is comment number two, comment two.
Okay, and and what was the other problem?
The one hundred foot setback, whether or not that prevented, that would have required moving the entrance ways.
Number seven. Number seven.
Okay. All right. So basically, you would, Attorney Slater, you would agree to complying with the May twenty seventh, twenty twenty letter from the town engineer with the deletion of of number two and seven.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain to the commissioners. We set a motion for this. Commissioner Claffey, could you draft something up for petition seventeen dash twenty site plan approval for the gas station convenience store?
The only question I have is per with what we just said to minus from the May twenty seventh letter, how will that affect the if if it will affect the April twenty ninth letter dated in the packet?
Craig?
Right, I was holding back from chiming in because we don't need too many cooks here. But I think if you approve it subject to the May twenty seven letter minus items two and seven, that that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
But let me ask you this, Mr. Planner. And your the items in your April twenty ninth letter in the packet, none of those one, two, three, four, five, or six have any bearing on anything?
Hang on, let me pull out that memo. All right, thank you. Yeah, I think the applicants have already addressed those issues. The trash enclosure being mislabeled and sheet number seven misnumbered. I think he's already addressed those.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I mean, I could make a motion based on petition seventeen dash twenty removing the two items in the dated letter, May twentieth, twenty twenty, basically is what you're asking, Dominic, correct?
That that's correct. So in other words,
I got you. I need to make a motion for this or is it already been on the tape?
No, you need to make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve petition seventeen dash twenty site plan approval at four Hartford Avenue Newington Gas Distributors LLC owner Delala LLC applicant Jawa Shallow. Contact to meet the requirements of the May twenty seventh, twenty twenty letter in regards to town Newington engineers requirement, list of items of fifty nine items, but to retract and remove item number two, provide concrete sidewalk along Hartford Avenue that we retract that and retract item seven regarding the one foot or excuse me, one hundred foot one hundred feet distance on item number seven.
Thank you, Commissioner Claffey. We have a motion on the table.
Sobieski.
Commissioner Sobieski, does all the commissioners understand? Is there any comments or discussion? I entertain, we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that was all ayes, no opposed. Very good. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next petition, Commissioner Claffey is petition sixteen dash twenty. If you could do same thing, there'll be on this, there'll be no conditions.
Make a motion for petition sixteen dash twenty special permit section six point one one service sale, repair, rental or storage of motor vehicles for a gas station slash convenience store at four Hartford Avenue. LLC applicant Newington Gas Distributors LLC owner Jawa Shallow, three bucks crossing Cromwell, Connecticut contact.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Claffey and seconded by Commissioner Sobieski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries again. I congratulate the attorney and the owners, and we're looking forward to having you build something really nice over there. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda under Old Business is petition oh six twenty, which is the subdivision amendment section three point seven drainage and stormwater improvements regarding LID residential subdivisions, Newington TPZ applicant. We talked last meeting about removing these, and the town planner has come up with a couple of motions here because he's going to rewrite this. So I'll entertain motion oh six twenty to be read. Does he have?
Yeah, muted.
I make a motion. Petition zero six dash twenty, I move to withdraw petition zero six dash twenty subdivision amendment section three point seven drainage and stormwater improvements regarding LID and residential subdivisions, Newington TPZ applicant.
Sobieski, second.
Commissioner Claffey has made the motion, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Sobieski. Discussion, does everybody understand we're removing this? Withdrawing this because instead of modifying these LID, we're going to, we discussed removing them all together. If there's no comments or discussion, I'll entertain a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The the next one is petition oh dash oh nine dash two oh zoning text amendment section six point one five regarding LID stormwater management at existing developments, Newington TPZ applicant. Similar thing, so I'll entertain a motion for that.
Make a motion. I move to withdraw petition zero nine dash twenty zoning text amendment section six point one five regarding LID stormwater management at existing developments, Newington TPZ applicant.
Sobieski, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Claffey and seconded by Sobieski for discussion. If there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So the we're at petitions for public hearing scheduling. We don't have anything, right, Craig?
Well, I do correct. We actually received one today, but it arrived too late to get on the agenda, so I'll have it for you at the next meeting.
Okay, and your town planners' report?
Oh, yes, okay. Yes, I addressed a number of issues. The first one was the outdoor restaurant seating. At the time that I wrote this memo, as of this writing, we have not received or approved any new outdoor restaurant seating since May twenty seven. The only one still pending is Subway at thirty one nineteen Berlin Turnpike, where we told them that on the green next to the Berlin Turnpike was unsafe. So we gave them some alternative locations, but we haven't had their back from them, and that's still the case. I still haven't heard from them. And then we also approved I'm sorry, Steve Leonard. Yeah, I mentioned that. Steve's place has asked to put some tables out in front. I met up, went out there and met with the gentleman, but I haven't heard from him, so I don't know if he went ahead and did it or if he's still thinking about it. And that's it. I haven't had any any new ones since then.
Before you go on to anything else, I just want to congratulate you and all the members of the TPZ and town staff. We really got right on top of this. I just noticed that in West Hartford, they just putting out the protection for the restaurants now. They went to zoning and they had to meet. And I just think that we really stepped it up. The whole commission stepped it up along with staff, along with highway department and everybody to to act on this extremely fast for the restaurants. And I think that they're, they appreciated it. It was, we gave them an opportunity to start their businesses ASAP and by doing it with the staff level, and I appreciate everybody's understanding to get that accomplished. Craig, you can, your next thing on the town planners' report is a P O C D?
Yes, just a quick update. The, again, the public hearing has been scheduled for July twenty second. We sent copies of the plan to the town council. They received it last week. They physically had it at their meeting last night. But at that point, they've only had it for a few days, so there weren't really too many comments on it. They have, they could do a number of things. They can hold their own public hearing on it if they wish, and then submit those comments to TPZ. They can discuss it and take no action on it. They have a number of options. Ideally, they will look at it, they'll like it, and they'll send favorable comments to the commission. If there are parts of it that they don't like, and they specifically say so, then those portions of the of the P O C D would have to be approved by a two thirds vote of the commission. But I I don't see that happening.
Okay, I have one concern on this is is the meeting is scheduled for a virtual Zoom. And I think this is just too important, and and I'm wondering whether the other commissioners think that they can we put this off a little while until we can have an actual public meeting? And and what their thoughts are on that. I'll open it up for the floor. Commissioner Claffey?
Well, to your point, I'll come back to my second question, but I think it is a larger discussion to have, and maybe we can push it out for now after we hear what the governor says for the next phase of opening and opening not just businesses, but opening public spaces. And I would be in favor of maybe pushing this out to a date in August, or I hate to sound this way, would it be bad if we push it out to September? Because during the summer, I'll say this, a lot of people aren't around in our community that might want to voice their concern, and I wouldn't want to have someone cancel a small little vacation over over this to just come and talk about it, rather maybe see if there are any constraints to pushing it out to maybe September.
Okay, and your other issue, Anthony?
The only other question on this is, has all the powers to be outside of Newington council, et cetera, like has CROG reviewed this or anybody in the thing to get their opinion on what this looks like or any independent other than the consultant working on it?
Okay, yes, CROG, yes, CROG is required to it's required to be referred to CROG, which we've done. We sent them a copy. I will contact CROG and ask them if we can expect comment from them. I think I know what the comment will be, that it's consistent with everything, but I will, I'll reach out to them and ask them what, if any, comment we can expect back from them.
Thank you. That's it, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Claffey. Any other commissioners have a concern about having this public hearing, virtual Zoom? And would you be interested in delaying it? And then the other concern is, Craig, do we have any, you know, according to Glenn, how much time do we have? I know he's trying to get this completed by a certain time, but.
Right, well, it's on track now to have the public hearing on July twenty second. I'm assuming that you're going to hear things at the public hearing that's going to want to make you go back and and make some more amendments. And so that it will require another meeting after the hearing before you actually adopt it, which would then be in early August. That's pretty much the deadline to adopt this, and that's with the COVID COVID nineteen extra ninety days that we got from from the governor. Now, if you go beyond the deadline, and I would have said this even before COVID, if we were back in the normal era and you were going, you're going to miss your deadline. The the ORS, the penalty for not updating your plan in a timely manner is I don't want to call it a slap on the wrist, but it doesn't have a lot of teeth. If if your plan, if you're out of date and you apply for a discretionary state grant, your application for that grant would have to contain a letter from your mother, as I call it, from the manager or the mayor explaining why we've missed our deadline and begging the state to not hold it against us and still approve the grant. But there really aren't any consequences to missing the deadline. I would never recommend you miss the deadline, but I don't think it's the end of the world if you do.
Okay, for under the circumstances, then, then because this is such an important document, if the commissioners agree, then we could probably extend this out. But I wouldn't want to just do it on my opinion. What are the other commissioners? How do you feel about this?
Commissioner Payne, as far as I'm concerned, we should probably extend it out a little bit, see how it goes.
Chairman Payne Fox, I I agree. I don't think there's any, well, it makes it tight, but Commissioner Claffey is absolutely one hundred percent correct. We should not bring up something something as important as this unless the entire town can participate if they wish. So I would, I would suggest we delay it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
The only problem with delaying it is I think it's indefinite. I don't see us coming together as a large group for still quite a while. So how far do you want to push this off? It's in September, October, November, then we're right back probably into seasonal flu again. As much as I want to do the, you know, have a public input and have them participate, I don't see a gathering of fifty, seventy five people in our town hall in the near future. Maybe I'm wrong, but I just don't see that happening.
Okay, Craig, if if we hold this for the July twenty second and we go ahead with this, is there anything that says that if, let's say, the end of July, we find out that the things loosen up and we could have more people in a meeting, couldn't we hold a second? One, if we find that the performance on the Zoom meeting wasn't very good?
Sure, what you could do is you could you could convene the Zoom meeting on July twenty second. And if you notice, there are only three or four people in the in the room, then keep the hearing open and and have it for real in in person, if if the opening up law is allowing it at that point.
All right, I think maybe we can do that. I think maybe Commissioner Woods is correct that we should probably still have it on the Zoom, and then we'll we'll take it from there. And if we have to adjust things, we could always add an extra public meeting in person if the circumstances allow it. But I agree with Commissioner Woods. We wouldn't want to delay this for more than But I agree with Commissioner Woods, we wouldn't want to uh delay this for um more than uh too long. Any other Commissioners have any comments? Okay, so um Craig, was that it?
Um just an update on the zoning regulations that I'm working on with Andrew, the personal business amendment and the commercial vehicle amendment, Andrew and I are working on that, and we'll have something for you at the next meeting.
Okay, and then you're going to uh also uh give the town planning and zoning a a list of outstanding performance bonds, you're going to work on that too?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, is there any uh comments from the Commissioners?
Commissioner Gil.
Yes, Commissioner.
And in regards to the uh personal business and commercial vehicles, uh I thought we were going to wait until we could uh meet together um on this. Or is this just going to be a preliminary?
Yeah, this is going to take a little while, and he's going to work and present us with something, and then um we'll probably leave it open for several meetings, so that we get it right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
Uh question more for the planner, do we know what's going on with the bond that was returned to the development behind Walgreens, it appears nothing has been done. Um I don't know if you can give us an update, if you have an update. Um from what I understand, the bu- the bu- the money was returned, but again, there was an outbreak.
I don't wish one, you mean, I wish one, and my I can't can't hear you.
Craig, that was the Demming Farm development? We returned the bond for the road? Do you have an update on that?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I only heard the last word, can you have an up, have an update on that?
Do you have an update on the development where we returned all the money for the road, for Demming Road?
Oh, I've no, I have no news on that.
Okay, can can you have that for our next meeting?
Yeah, status of the the Demming Road situation, you mean, sure, I can do that.
Yeah, because I think it's important, I think it's important to find out uh what the status is there, whether or not they're going to replace the road or not, they got the money was returned to them, and it was supposedly very important to them, so I think the Commissioners uh should get an update on it. Commissioner Fox, do you have something? Anything? Okay, any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, uh no communications? Public participation, if anybody's still on here uh from the public? You're welcome to uh speak? Or ask a question if there's anybody from the public?
We have one member and both of your commi- uh council representatives are on.
Okay. Uh if there's uh no comments from the public, then um and I'll ask for final remarks from Commissioners, or and if there isn't anything, I'll ask for an adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox, seconded by
Stanley.
Stanley, Commissioner, um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank everybody very much, and thank you, James, for your help, and thank you, Craig, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Well, this is really frustrating.